It is 7:01, so I'm late. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and this is the regular city council meeting for June 3rd for Minnetonka. Our first order of business, I'd like to ask all of you, so first of all, welcome, welcome all of you, thank you for coming. And second, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
So again, welcome. Also, just a friendly reminder, if you have electronic devices with you, cell phones or something, please put them on airplane mode or on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. So next, I'm going to do, make a few introductions here, and this time, I'm going to start out at this end of the field. Our Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters is with us this evening. We have City Clerk Chris Lindquist. And then, at the podium here at the Diaz, we have our engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky. And then, we have council members Shannon Bruce, John Chumperland, Mike Molitor, Pam Mortensen. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And then, to my right, our city administrator, Mike Barone. We also have Brian Grimm, who is our finance director, David Abel, our community development director. Our city attorney is Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. And then, on the end, we have our attorney, our chief of police, Paul Falls, also with us this evening. We have Adam Gadbois, and he'll be doing a presentation. He's one of our engineers with WSB as well. And then, Miles Jensen is also here with SEH, talking about some of the soil borings. Very interesting. So, with that, we're going to move to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
I did have a couple, just one addition. There were some resident concerns that we got via email, and I would just like to add those to the agenda.
Those will be under council discussions, our council reports?
Right. And I spoke with Mr. Barone this morning, and I thought, perhaps we could have just a section of the agenda for resident concerns, because sometimes people come to public hearings, sometimes we talk about them at the end of the meeting. Some people don't like coming to talk at a podium, they're intimidated by that. So I was thinking, if we had just a resident concern section of the agenda, it could be a place where historically, we could go back to to see...
What we would have to do is talk about that maybe at a work session. We really already have that, because we have persons to be heard, and then, we also have where residents send us emails that we talk, or a letter, or call us, and then, we bring that to the council under either staff reports or council reports.
Right. But there isn't one spot where we can go to see those things. And I know we've had issues come up where we've asked, how many times has this issue come up? It would create a spot where we could go to to have historical information about issues of concern the residents have.
Sure. And so, like I said, we're not going to add it tonight, because I think we need to discuss it as a council, and the council as a whole needs to decide how they want to handle that. So I would suggest that we could bring that up at the next work session.
Okay. I didn't think it was that, think of a...
Sure. So that's what we'll do. And then, tonight, I know there's several emails that we received that we will be discussing. So, with that, are there any other changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Tonight, we don't have any special presentations, so we'll move on to persons to be heard. So we have Scott King Ellison, and if you want to, one of you wants to come and address the council?
Sure. Sure. Let me know.
So just kind of FYI, what we have is, you have about three minutes. We know what, why you're here, so, and we'll have some information to share with you. But go ahead, and you have three minutes to tell us why you're here.
Sure. Today, I'm here to discuss an issue along County Road 44. Several residents, and actually, many residents, and some are here tonight as well to also contribute to the discussion. We've been concerned with the chemical that's being pumped into the ground at the tunnel at the pit at the entrance of Eagle Bluff Road and County Road 44. Now, this has been going on for a while, and we have the dates here, and I can get those for you. I think it's been over like a three-week time period, but I'll get you the exact dates. And it's our understanding that this project hit a major obstacle with the tunnels dug under Lake Minnetoka, and they were filling up with water. And the solution that the Met Council had to proceed with the construction was to pump a chemical substance into the ground to prevent the water seeping into the tunnels and the tunnel pits. This has kind of come out through various discussions with some of the construction workers that are there. And we weren't informed by the Met Council on what the chemical is being used, or how it is being pumped into the ground. But the main concern we have is the labels of the chemicals of what's being pumped into the ground, and what we've heard is very large amounts. And what we've heard is a quote from a project worker that even said, now, one of the things we've included for a lot of the people that were interested was pictures of the labels on the sides of the containers, as well as the volume. There's like a truck with a trailer and a large volume on both truck and on the trailer. Now, if you read the labels, we can provide them for everybody, it says like cancer-causing, and if you're exposed to this, go to a doctor immediately, and a long list, and we can get you actual pictures here, as far as what we have, if you want to put them up on the slides. But what we're concerned about is, this is being used in a heavy fishing spot, first of all, and you see boats come in and out of there fishing all the time. Kids frequently jump from the bridge and swim in that area, and it's near many people's well water systems. Now, if you look at where this is located, and where this volume of chemical is located, there's a large hole in the ground there, if you haven't seen it. And the only real barrier separating Lake Minnetoka is a tiny barrier that goes down a ways, to separate things on the path of the water and dirt from going into the lake. But as far as chemicals, that really wouldn't prevent any chemicals from going in there. Now, on Saturday, I went up there with several neighbors, and we can see that water is actively being pumped from these pits over the barriers, right into the channel between Prespa and Holstead Bay, right into Lake Minnetoka. Now, we're at the, kind of the beginning here, but that's all going down towards Wayzetta and the rest of the lake there. So what we're, our second concern is overall, the health and water quality effects on our wells because of this chemical. First of all, we've kind of found out what it is over the course of the past several days, and people familiar, are educated on us what this chemical is, but still, not negating the negative effects. So, as residents and people in this area that use the lake, we're concerned with the, some of the issues that we found, that our well water has smelled bad for a while now. And that's something, I've been here since 2012 in the fall, and we never really noticed that in the past. So what is the correlation between this activity and that? And it's not just one or two residents, it's multiple residents noticing this. And then, the sec, or the third concern we have is the effect on the wildlife. If you go into that area there, or up in our neighborhood, you'll see what we would call like a frog pond. Usually, it's just full of wildlife. It's been very quiet, and I've never seen the water go low in that pond. Usually, it's flooded, but, and we have a whole sequence of pictures showing how that water level went way down, kind of the absence of wildlife, the absence of vegetation. And now that the waters come back up, you can kind of see a considerable slick on the surface of the water. And again, the absence of wildlife. So what we're wondering on that as well, with the dead fish, the no presence of frogs or other wildlife that are usually around at this time of year, it's a pretty common thing. What effect did this chemical, or other chemicals, have on this wildlife area?
Sure.
And then, the other concern we have is, this has always been navigable by boats, and it's been used to, in the past, we've seen weed harvesting equipment parked in there. Now, it's all filled with silt, and it's kind of gone in there, and the area has shrunk considerably. And what we're seeing, kind of the, with this project, the wells were drilled to pump the water out of the tunnel and pits. Now, the pond has been losing water, and we believe that this could affect the wildlife. We're not sure if the short term or the long term, I guess that remains to be seen. And we'll continue to see whether this pond that's full of wildlife next to it, if that water continues to drop and go up and down, and if the wildlife ever returns. So those are the key areas we're concerned about, the health and water, quality effects on the wells. What is this chemical? Why are all these warning signs on it? What volume was actually put in there? And then, finally, the long-term effects on the wildlife, the inlet and the adjacent pond.
Yeah. Well, thank you, and I think those are legitimate concerns. So, as you know, the city, this is not a city project. So what we did is, last week, when I received the email, I immediately called staff and said, hey, we need to be in contact with Met Council to get information from them as to what's going on. So just so you know, we're, we understand your concerns, and we made the appropriate calls immediately to get some information. We just got some information today, and I'm going to let Mr. Barone share that information with you, and give you some information to take with you. So, with that, and then, if you have additional questions, you can ask us, but the real people, and we'll give you that, the contact information, the real people you need to be asking is at the Met Council. But let Mr. Barone tell you what information he got today.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Residents of that area, I understand your concern, and so, as the mayor stated, I ended up talking with Chris Remus, who's one of the engineers assigned to this project, and basically went through the email that Mr. Hesper sent to us, and went through all the comments and questions that were in there. And generally, we don't do this at this time. Usually, the persons to be heard is to just kind of give us some things that are not, are not on the agenda, but I don't want you guys to sit here through the whole meeting and wait till the end to do it. So, the pictures that you present, presented of the chemical, that AV-160, that's actually one of two chemicals that is used, and essentially, they mix it together to form a grout. The grout is used to plug up holes, which is what they're trying to do with this pipe. It's very similar to a grout if you're going to grout the tile in your, in your home. You mix the two together, it gets real stiff and putty-like, and you spread it out and it hardens up. There's nothing toxic once the two chemicals are mixed together. The warning labels that are on those chemicals, that AV-160, those are generally for the people working on it, because it's kind of like paint fumes, you don't want to sniff them too long. So it's of no concern to residents, health-wise. When they get mixed together, it becomes inert and non-toxic. And that's what they're using to pack that, that, those tunnels up, to try to make that work. So, that's the chemical. So you really don't have, it's, it'll be fine, once they're all done and get the project completely done, you folks will still be able to swim there and fish there and things of that nature. So, it's this typical industry-standard grout that's used for these kind of projects. And then, the additional comment that I'll make about, I'll start again, talk a little bit about wells. Chris Hagan, who lives at 3275, I don't know if he's here, but nonetheless, he, it was stated in the email that a well was put in his place to monitor groundwater levels. He said it was to monitor groundwater quality. It is not there to monitor groundwater quality, it's there to monitor the groundwater levels. But, for the folks that live at the seven addresses that Mr. Hesper put in his email, the Met Council Environmental Services, MCES, they're going to contract with a state-certified environmental firm. They're going to make contact with each of you homeowners that are listed in there, and they're going to come and test the water in your well. There won't be any charge, of course, to this, to you for that. So there's seven homes. If there's more than that, if there's additional homes, please let MCES know when they contact you. I don't know exactly when or how they're going to contact you. I don't think they have phone numbers. They have your mailing addresses, they may mail it to you. They have a few email addresses, because that was included in what I sent over to them. So they may email you. I'm not exactly sure how they'll do it, but they will make contact with you. And they said they would do it soon. Also, as of last Friday, the, I'll use a few acronyms here. So the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which is the MPCA, the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District, which is the LMCD, and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, which is the MCWD. They all have no concerns about the project that's going on there, and the procedures being used to do this sewer project in that area. They have no concerns about the grout, and I believe they've tasked the MCWD, which is the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, with the, they're tasked to put together a report, and I believe you'll be, they'll have a copy of that report shared with you at some point in time. All the water that is run through their area, they have a green filter box up near the top of the bridge, and that's where they're filtering all the water, and then, they dump it back in to the pond area. So I think what you're seeing, you're seeing a lot of turbidity in the water. I think it's fairly shallow now. I think they're dumping a lot of filtered water back in there that's kind of stirring up the soup, so to speak. So it's kind of cloudy. I know there's not a lot of wildlife there, I understand the concern. These guys are engineers, he didn't really have an answer for me on the wildlife, but they've had this come up before, and they're generally short-term in nature. All this work was scheduled to be done during the winter months. They are putting, they are replacing one sewer line that's, I don't know, built in the eighties, was it seventies or eighties? It's pretty old.
Probably.
And they're replacing with two lines that are slightly smaller, but capacity-wise larger. And so, the first one went in just fine. The second one has not gone in, and they've been struggling for months, which is why they're still there. They were all supposed to be done with this in March. So they're, they're working on it to try to finish this up, because they have the rest of the project to do too as well. They got the road reconstruction that goes all the way down to Highway 7. So, so they're aware of your concerns, in fact, not knowing about your issue until we met with, the mayor had asked, why has it taken so long? And so, we actually convened a meeting with these same people last Wednesday, and I heard from you guys on Thursday or Friday, I believe. So we were as concerned, the concerns we had were, why has it taken so long to get these pipes through? And then, we also had a public safety concern, because Mount Fire and St. Bonnie Fire, depending on where they're at, they'd have to go all the way around. They had a system set up to, with this March completion date for these pipes to be done by then, set up with all the other neighboring communities, they call it AutoAid. So if there's a fire alarm that goes off, or an emergency, they know who to send. It could be from a neighboring city that's actually closer than our own city because of the construction. So that was their concern, it was a public safety concern, which they figured out, and now, we have a vehicle, I think, parked on the other side of the, you guys probably saw them do it last Friday. So that's there, and it's in place, and so now, our concerns, at least for public safety, were satisfied. And then, your stuff came up. So here we are again, talking with them about this concern, so.
And the other thing, maybe, MCWD, the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, would also be a good source to contact regarding the pond issue? I don't know if it's a stormwater pond, but they might be able to come out and take a look at it, and decide what, what might need to be done, if anything. They may say, wait until the end of the construction project, and then, they might have to assess it, but maybe contact them.
Yes, probably.
They're kind of the experts in the stormwater issue.
Yep. And like I said, of those three agencies I listed off, they're the ones that are going to put together some report. I don't know if we're getting that report, or if the Met Council Environmental Services is getting it, but you can certainly ask for it. It's a public document, once they produce it, so.
Mike?
You want to come to the podium, if you don't mind?
Hi, I'm Tony Hesper. I wanted to apologize for...
Ken, I'm sorry, you're going to have to give us your address for the record.
32, or 3420 Eagle Bluff Road.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm the person who sent the email.
Yes.
First of all, I want to say, apologize for being late, I was caught in a meeting, but I really appreciate you reaching out to MC, was it MCES?
MCES, yeah.
And can I just email everyone's email, phone number?
Sure. I'd be happy to send along to those folks.
Awesome. Because that's been our biggest concern. We have, every house around this project is having cloudy, stinky water. I grew up in hardscrabble, literally, the point right across the bridge. I owned a house on Pine Circle, is my second house, so for 40 years, I've lived within a half-mile of this project.
Right.
The water's never been like this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's cloudy, it's not normal Minnetonka water, stinky, it's fall. So I think that's our biggest concern.
Sure.
Everyone's having well issues, so I really appreciate this. I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, please do.
If there's anything, we're going to touch with the Minnesota pollution control agency, the DNR, and they're all like, you have to go to someone certified to test.
Right, and they'll provide that.
Every time we call someone, they're like, well, we don't know if we want to touch this, so.
No.
And the Met Council will do that, so.
Yeah, they'll contract with somebody, I don't know who it's going to be, if they've got a list.
So you don't have to do that.
Right. So I just want to say thank you, I'll follow up with that email, because I think all of our biggest concerns are probably the wells.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't know what, how deep your wells are, but generally, wells are 100 feet plus deep. And I know these guys are only digging down about 30 to 50 feet, so...
But we're on the bluff, so if you go 100 feet down...
I get that.
Our thought was, it might not be the chemicals we're putting in, it might be the fact that they're just pushing groundwater around.
Could be, yeah.
But something's happened with it.
Sure. And if you guys aren't treating your water, you're not on city water, you're on wells.
We're on wells, but even like Hagan and ourselves, we still install a brand-new kinetic water system, and it's still...
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know what the story is, but they'll check it for you.
Good deal. But just want to say thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks for the quick response.
Yep.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, it's disconcerting to see all that happen.
Okay. So, Pat and Don, you signed up, Mr. and Mrs. Turk, but we're going to have your issue later on? Or did, you didn't want to talk right now, right? Okay, that's what I thought. All right, thank you. So I think Eagle Bluff was the only other thing on here, we've taken care of that, okay?
Yes. And Carla Granum in that, 3280 Eagle Bluff Road. And I just, when you said they ran into a problem, and that's why it's taking longer, do they know why they ran into a problem?
No.
Did they, so the water's coming from somewhere that was unexpected?
Correct.
And so, it easily could be arid or...
It could be, I don't know. That's what they got to figure out.
Okay. And that's all we addressed at Metropolitan Council?
Well, they're the ones doing the project. So, and I don't know all the ins and outs of the project, I just know that first pipe went in, fine, second one right next to it did not. Don't know why.
But, I mean, they're, I see they're fixing something, but it seems like first, they would need to know what was causing it. My daughter actually is an environmental engineer in wastewater treatment plants, her thing. So she gave me a list of things to ask, but I should address those to them.
They're going to be able to answer those questions way better than me.
Okay, they didn't tell you that they thought it was a certain issue that started it?
No.
But they were surprised about the amount of water, and that's what's...
Well, they're surprised that they haven't been able to stop it any sooner, which is why they're doing this caulk or whatever, sorry, and then they're jamming that in there to stop it.
Okay. All right. All right. So next...
Can I ask one more question on that?
Sure.
This is Scott King Ellison.
What type of check and balances in place then, once they come back with these various
answers, or how do we know as far as, I guess, has it been certified, or is there some other group that looks at that?
Are you talking about the well testing?
You're talking about the well testing?
Yes, and their whole construction project. For example, when you're talking about the inert and non-toxic one mix, who is supervising, and who's taking them when they're still volatile and poisonous in all these various states, and putting them together, is, who's looking in on this and keeping an eye on the Met Council?
Well, I think they have some observation that goes on there, but it's up to them. But they're, they're, they're the ones that are mixing that stuff together.
Or their contractor, right.
Their engineer.
Their engineering contractor, yeah. Is there, so is there a name or somebody that, contact information that we should be giving them?
I don't know who the right person might be, it kind of depends on the question they're asking, so.
Okay.
I think I'll take whatever information...
We technically can't talk to the Met Council directly, because we have an attorney representing the association. So, just so you guys know, we have to talk to our attorney, who sends a note to the Met Council.
Yeah. They're in a legal dispute with, what, Rightaway, or something?
Yeah.
I don't know. I just heard that from...
Okay, so you can't talk to the Met Council about any other issue?
No issues. We have, we talk to our attorney, who sends it to their attorney, so it's kind of a convoluted communication channel.
Okay. All right.
We'll, we'll, for your follow-up emails on that call.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I, all right, I think we're done with that. So we'll move on now to our consent agenda items. They consist of, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from May 20th, 2019, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from May 20th, 2019, a resolution, C is a resolution to approve claims, and D is a resolution to approve the Tristadae Pig Race's sponsorship contributions, and E is a resolution to approve our outdoor emergency warning sirens maintenance agreement. That would be A, B, C, D, and E. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen, and seconded by Mr. Chumperland. Any further questions? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we're going to move on to our public hearing this evening, and that's why most of you are here this evening. I'm going to let Adam Gadbois with WSB give us an overview of the assessments, and then, of course, you will all have an opportunity to speak as well.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for adopting the assessment for the 2019 street improvement project. As you recall, on the May 6th council meeting, the council ordered the preparation of the proposed assessments, and then called for this hearing on those assessments. At that May 6th meeting, the amount to be assessed was declared to be $222,210.83. That number was arrived to using the city's assessment policy, which states that benefiting property owners adjacent to the project may be assessed at 50% of the total street and storm costs. So that's how that number was arrived at. So the proposed assessments for this project are just for the streets within the projects that are being reclaimed, and those are DeShane Lane, DeShane Circle, and Oxy Oak Circle. The way that the assessments were calculated were based on residential equivalent units. Really just means each parcel was assigned one unit, and then, the costs were distributed equally over all the units. That cost per residential equivalent unit was calculated to be $8,546.57 per parcel, and that, that amounts to that total assessment that I just mentioned. You have a list of the properties to be assessed and a map within the council packet. And just to, just to reiterate, so, the project was bid, and the costs came back from the contractor. To do the reclamation portion of the project was $444,421.66. So the city's portion of that cost is 50%, and then, the benefiting property owners is the remaining 50%. The assessments following the city's assessment policy would be levied over a 20-year period, and the interest rate would be 5%. I'd stand for any questions, otherwise, we can roll into the...
Well, I have a question, one particularly pertaining to the percent, interest percent, because normally, when we do a larger project, we may bond for it, and then, we have a certain percentage that we have to pay, and then, our policy is 2% above that. Since we are not bonding for this, my question is, why are we then charging arbitrarily 2% above what maybe would have been a bond issue? So why wouldn't we just charge 2% or maybe 3%? Why the 5%?
Well, the 5%, we, the 3% is what's out on the, on the bond market. We would go out to issue bonds for this project, like we've done for others. I talked to our financial advisor here recently on what a similar, you know, city with a here recently on what a similar, you know, city with a similar bond rating would be, and he said it was between, you know, 3, 3.1%. So, to be consistent with our policy, you know, we go 2% above our debt issuance rate. I know we're not specifically issuing debt on this project because it's a smaller scale project, but that's ultimately up to the council to decide if they wanna deviate from it, but that's why it's presented the way it's presented.
Well, again, because we're not bonding for this, it seems somewhat odd. So, anyhow, okay. Any other questions for Adam at this time? Otherwise, I'm going to open. Now, the other thing is, what is the process here? Maybe Mr. Beatty, can you kind of run us through the process and tell us what the city's responsibilities are? And then, what is the process for the residents?
Sure. Madam Mayor, council, I think you're asking about the appeal process if folks are unhappy with tonight's decision. What you're about to hold is a public hearing. Everyone gets a chance to speak. The council will then consider a resolution, which you've got in your packet, and people have gotten a summary of in their letter. If, there's a two-step process to be able to challenge a special assessment. The first is that you need to submit tonight, if you have not already done so, a written objection. And that can be as simple as taking a piece of loose leaf paper and saying, "I object," and write your name and address. That needs to be done prior to the closing of the public hearing tonight. That simply preserves your right to appeal. It's not an appeal itself. Then you have 30 days after the adoption of the assessment to actually appeal, which means filing a lawsuit against the city. The objection part is important, though, because if you don't file a written objection, you've waived your right to appeal.
Okay, and then, another question, maybe Brian. So, if somebody, I know this may have been stated in the letter, but again, just for the record, if somebody wanted to pay their assessment in full, what date do they have to do that in? And then, would there be, with no interest charged?
So, what went out in the letter and what's in the resolution is that they would be able to pay through November 1st or November 1st of 2019 in free. They could pay off either the full amount, or in the first year, the assessments leveled, you can actually make a partial amount if you wanna pay half or something. But then, after that, basically, it's paid with your property taxes annually. Per the, their amortization schedule was sent to all the residents or affected properties along the route, and it would follow that amortization schedule until they chose, like, in year five, they could decide, hey, I wanna pay this off, and then pay off the balance that's on that schedule or whatever gets adopted tonight per, you know, any other schedule, you know, to the city, and then it would not be on the property tax anymore. But...
So, the first one is November 1st to pay it off in full. You said in half. So, if they paid half November 1st of 2019 and then paid half November 1st, 2020, there'd be no interest?
No, no. You basically have one shot to pay, make a partial payment. Once it's at the county, they don't want you messing with the amortization schedule. So, once it's at the county after that first year, whatever has been certified or sent down to the county is what's gonna either have to be paid with property taxes throughout, you know, basically through years 1, 2, 3, 4, all the way through year 20, or it has to be paid in full, the remaining balance to the city here in whatever that respective year is. So, there's only, the only time a partial payment can be made is by November...
By November 1st. See, partial payment or full payment. Okay. And then, after that, it would have to be full payment of the balance, of the remainder. Okay?
Yeah, correct.
All right.
With interest, right?
Yeah, basically, interest is... Yeah. For, once it's at the county for the year, basically, you're paying it with your property taxes. So, it's interest through December 31st of that year. But, as it said in the letter, say you wanna come in in 2020 or 2021 and pay off the remaining balance, you could do that here before November 15th of that subsequent year to city, to the city of Minnetrista here, if they wanted, after that first year.
So, in 2020, if they wanted to pay off the balance, they could do that. There'd be interest, but they would have to do that by November 15th?
Of 2020.
Of 2020 or any subsequent year. They could make it prior to then, to that date, too?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Just any time.
Sometimes it's confusing as to what, what, what the dates are, and so I just wanted to clarify that once again. So, all right.
And we'll try to, the plan would be to send, whatever action happens, you know, tonight, we send out a subsequent letter detailing again the process, just to make sure, try to make that as clear as possible.
Make it as clear as possible. That would be a good idea. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gadbois. Any other questions? Otherwise, I will open the public hearing. So, this is a public hearing, and all of those here this evening, if you wish to speak, you'll have to come to the podium. You'll have to state your name and address for the record. So, what we'll do is we'll start on this side. If anybody wishes to speak or have a question regarding the assessment, please come forward and, are you interested in speaking? I'll start with you.
Brian Ehal, 6965 DeShane Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you picked the least prepared guy to speak.
Okay, thanks.
But, we did get the, we got the letter of the assessment. My wife and I are in agreement by all means, the road needs improvement. It hasn't, you know, had an upgrade. Since I remember, I've been there 15 to 20 years. Can't even tell you that. So, we're in agreement with that. It's the amount of the assessment that's got us concerned. I believe you picked 50% of the cost of the project divided among the three or four neighborhoods.
31, yeah.
Yeah, neighborhoods. And other locations, I, you know, I've seen and heard of project costs being 25% rather than 50%. I think that's a more fair assessment. That's what I'd like to propose.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ehal.
And actually, just for clarification, there's 26 affected properties.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yep.
I said 31.
Yes.
All right.
Good evening. Brian Andes, 440 DeShane Circle. I guess I have a couple, a question first, and then a few comments. This September, I will have lived in our house for 19 years. I've seen some maintenance and some repairs done on the roads, and I agree. The cul-de-sac is in need of desperate repair or replacement. But, I guess the question I have is, why are we being assessed anything at all? Maybe I missed that in your letter. Maybe I explained it. I don't remember that. But, I'm trying to figure out, you know, as Minnesota state taxpayer, we pay our taxes, and don't our taxes go to this? The gentleman here said it's a benefit to us residents. What is the benefit that's being provided? I believe we're just taking a road that's outdated, outworn, and bringing it up to our minimal standards that we should receive living in the neighborhood that we live in. And so, I guess the question, why are we being assessed at all? A benefit to me in the property would be gutters, sidewalks, streetlights. I have no problem with those assessments. But, a road, a public road on top of that, that I have to pay above and beyond my taxes? So, I don't oppose the project because that we do need a new road, a new cul-de-sac, but I absolutely oppose paying any assessment at all for this. I appreciate what Brian said, reducing it. Sure, we'd love to have a reduction, but to pay anything is kind of frustrating to me. Another comment that I have is, you know, you look around. This is a sample of our neighborhood. We have people who are retired. They have fixed incomes. They have people like myself and my wife. We have four children going through college. Another $8,000 is a lot of money to us. We have other families just moved into our neighborhood, very young families just starting out. I don't know if this is a hardship for anybody, but it sure is a hardship for my wife and I, another $8,000. So, that is that. And then, yeah, and I also wonder, you know, should this road have been repaired or replaced 10 years ago? If so, what would the cost have been then? Would they have been less to us as residents for the assessment? So, therefore, I do believe that the assessment's high. It's my opinion that we should pay a penny for it because of our tax dollars already, but I would like the project to go forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, would you care to say anything?
No.
Nope. All right. All right, then we'll move on to this side, right behind Miles. Anybody? Okay?
My name's Dave Locke. I've lived at 6885 DeShane Lane for the past 42 years. My wife, Betty and I, like I say, have lived there for 42 years. We do not oppose the Street Improvement Project, but we do believe that the assessed amount is unfair. We have enjoyed living here, but DeShane Lane has been in bad shape for many years. It is disintegrated and badly in need of replacement. The recent patching did not help. We do feel we should share the cost of the replacement. I'm not quite as hard as you are. But, however, we feel that the current assessment of 50% is excessive, and the city should take more of the responsibility. We do not feel the assessment amount will add value to our property. It is our understanding that other street improvement projects, specifically Halsted, Enchanted Lane, and Game Farm Road, were charged at a rate less than 50%. In addition, DeShane Lane has several senior citizens and some young families with small children. This could present a burden to them. Lastly, we are asking that we reduce the percentage from 50% to one that is fair to the residents of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Is there anybody else in that row?
My name is John Anderson, and I have to take second fiddle to Dave and Betty. We've only been there 41 years. We love Minnetrista. We appreciate the rural nature of it. Love our development. The road does need to be repaired badly, and we are in favor of it. I, too, was shocked about the assessment. I was shocked that there was any assessment. I did not know that we could be assessed for our road running by us. So, given that, we were told the estimate was going to be around $6,000 at the first meeting, and we were hoping for a much less percentage on that. Now that it's risen to $8,500, it is really painful, and I beg the council to reconsider that 50%. Other developments have paid 25, and they have many more resources than our community does, I believe. So, I'm asking the council for 25%. I have a legal question for our attorney here. When we submit our letters, and we don't use the word "object" because we do want the road to go through, but we're asking for 25% or lower amount, is that considered an objection?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I can answer. Yeah, all you're objecting to is the assessment.
The amount.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're not objecting to the project.
No, that's a done deal.
Okay.
And my address is 6845 DeShane Lane.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Anderson, can you say that one more time? Our clerk needs to record that.
John Anderson, 6845 DeShane Lane.
Thank you.
With an apostrophe that the post office doesn't...
Okay. So, the next row, we have several people back here. Okay?
My name is Mark Feldman, 8325 Oxyoke Circle. And I agree with the gentleman here. This is mind-boggling to me that after a road is put in, the city doesn't maintain it, because that's basically what you're doing, is no longer maintaining it. You're pushing it off on us. I've never lived anywhere that did this. I've had homes in Stillwater, Oklahoma, West Lafayette, Indiana, Austin, Texas, Round Rock, Texas, New Ulm, Minnesota for one of your own. Nobody ever does this. If you were, I think this gentleman said if you were putting in, we have no utilities from you, so if you were putting some of that in, I could get that. But, to do what you failed to do in the past years by maintaining the road and then wanting us to pay for it, it's just, it's beyond me. I don't understand how that works. I'm not sure. Where does our money go? Minnesota has the highest, some of the highest income taxes in the country, with the exception of a few states. Same with the gas tax. Where's that money go to?
Not us.
Well, why doesn't it go to you?
Can we talk to the state representative about that? We don't get a penny of that.
Well, but you're the ones that are supposed to be representing us to take care of that. And apparently, you're not doing your jobs then if you're not getting that money from the state, because there's car registrations in this state. I haven't paid over $70 to register or relicence a car in the last 25 years. And I don't drive junk. And here, my, I assume my Buick will probably cost me about 800 or 900 bucks when I relicence it up here. Down in Texas, it was $70.
Well, we're not here...
And so, where does that money go? We mail our property taxes into the state, and then you guys don't represent us and go get your share?
No, we do. No, we do.
He said you didn't.
No, no, no. Hold on.
He didn't say we taxed.
Let me explain. We don't get gas tax dollars. We do in a sense. So, we get what's called municipal state aid. However, we get some of that, and we are restricted on which roads we can actually use that money on. Unfortunately, DeShane Lane is not one of the roads that the state will allow us to use the few dollars that we do get from the state for roads. We can't use it on DeShane Lane. In answer to your question regarding property taxes, if you look at your property tax bill, it consists, money goes to the school district. It goes to the city. There's a city portion. It goes to Hennepin County, and there's other taxing authorities as well, such as the Minniac Creek Watershed District and Three Rivers Park District. So, we get a small portion of that. It's about 27% of your total property tax bill. And then, you asked in this, and kind of so you know, we go through a budget process, and we make that public information as to what we spend our money on. Your tax dollars are spent on public safety, our police department, our fire contracts for fire protection. It goes to plowing the roads. It goes to gravel. I mean, there's a lot of things it goes to. And we can, we don't need to have that discussion tonight, but certainly, we can inform you of where the money goes. So, some of it does go to maintenance, to streets. But, we just had a work session here, just so all of you know, there is a life expectancy of roads, and they usually are about 25 to 30 years. So, once the road is, after that time, usually, you're replacing the road. So, it depends. Different cities do it differently. Some do special assessments, a certain percentage of it. Other cities don't. Others actually assess 100% of it. So, the city council are listening to you this evening, and then after the public hearing, we will then have a discussion amongst us as to what we feel would be a fair assessment. We hear you loud and clear. So, thank you, Mr. Feldman. Is there anybody else in the back there that wishes to...
I have two questions.
You need to come to the microphone, Mr. Locke, because we, it has to be on tape.
I just had two questions, a clarification. One, maybe I misunderstood. You said there was how many homes involved with this?
26.
Total of 26. That's on DeShane Lane, DeShane Circle, and Oxyoke.
Correct.
Altogether.
If you take the $222,000, you divide it by the $8,500, I think you get 13.
That's 15, that's 50% of 26. That's why, the split is 50/50 between homeowners and the city.
Oh, you split. Okay, I split it first or after.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
The second thing is, you said that after about 25 years, the road needs replacement. Am I correct?
Generally, 25 to 30 years is generally.
Like I said, it's been 42 years. The road has never been replaced.
Right.
And so, it's well past due. I think the city council has some responsibility there.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Okay, one more time.
Brian Andes, 440 DeShane Circle. Two questions. You said that some gas tax money is not available to our street, DeShane Circle. I'm trying to figure out why that is. And second...
We would like to know, too.
How do we get so lucky? And second, if there is an assessment, which I'm hoping there's not, but if there is, it goes onto our property tax. We decide to leave and move our house in five years. What then? Does it just get attached to the property for the next owner?
Generally not.
Generally, if...
A lot of times, it's cleared up at, through the closing statement. The, I mean, nine times out of 10, usually, the seller pays it off, but it can be assumed by the buyer if that's worked out in the purchase agreement or...
Okay, so then, I guess I have some additional comments on that. So, now I'm gonna pay for a benefit to a property to have a minimum street that I no longer live there, that I'm still paying for. I guess I just ask the council to look at our situation and say, "That is unfair," especially to a street that hasn't been replaced in 42 years. I'm not so sure any of our residents here are aware of that, that no matter what, we as the current homeowners are gonna pay for this in full, period.
Right.
Again, I just ask the council to...
Sure.
Vote for zero assessment and take the responsibility 100%. Thank you.
All right. All right. One last call. Okay.
Kevin Palmer, 8305 Oxyoke Circle. I'd like to know how Kristen Lane got out of this deal, because in their first letter is that they were part of this. How did they get to not get their road fixed? They just opposed it?
There was 100% opposition by all of the residents, and they did not want it. And so, the council said, "Well, if, since it's 100% of the property owners that are opposed to the project, we will then take it out with the knowledge or understanding that their road is not going to be redone anytime soon."
Okay, are you still gonna maintain it? Fix pot holes?
Probably not.
It's minimal. It's gonna be minimal. We're gonna have to have other priorities.
I mean, otherwise, we're just spending good money for no reason. We have other, we have a ton of things we should be spending our road budget on, and we literally don't have enough money to do all the things we need to do.
Okay, I've lived here for almost 19 years. You have seal-coated and crushed-rocked it one time, and you've done a very poor job, I don't know if it's Gary or whoever prior to him, of patching potholes, fixing the drainage. In the last repair, the road goes like this. You can watch a school bus go down the road like this, you know? And this amount is outrageous. I have cancer. I have cancer. I can't write a check for 8,500 bucks. If I finance it, 13,000. I might as well just jump off a cliff. It's outrageous.
Yep.
So you guys need to redo it and come up with a better solution. It's a public road. Why do we need to pay for it and all of you can drive down it for free?
Well, we're not driving down it for free because the rest of the city is too.
Well, in essence, you are. You've got all these big commercial garbage trucks coming down the road when you have a weight restriction damaging our roads. I can't bring my Bobcat in, but the garbage truck can come in and damage it.
Yep. Let's go ahead.
So you guys need to figure it out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? So what I'm going to do is I'm not going to close the public hearing right now. I will do that after the councils had their discussion. That will leave the door open for anybody that wishes to appeal the assessment. There will be some assessment. I don't know what that amount is going to be. That will be for the council to decide. So with that, who would like to start?
Well, I'll start. When we determine the assessment, I was in favor of something a little bit closer to the original amount that we had estimated. And I realize that that was an estimate, but I felt that that was a little closer to being realistic and also fair. So I'm still at that point. I don't think the 8,500 is fair. I don't think it's, for all the reasons the residents have stated this evening, so I'm not going to be voting for an $8,500 assessment.
Just to give some perspective, I heard some comments about Game Farm Road being, we use a lower percentage for Game Farm Road, but I live, I had to pay an assessment for Game Farm Road and the people along Game Farm paid $11,000. Each parcel was $11,000. I live on a connector street. I paid $9,000 when I paved Game Farm Road. And I think the reason that percentage was lower is the density along Game Farm Road isn't as dense. So I'm sure that was a factor that we took into consideration, but rest assured, there are other projects, my street in particular, where we've paid much higher than this assessment. So that's just perspective, so I just wanted to clear that up.
Just a clarification, I think Game Farm Road was 13,000 on the actual.
Oh, was it 13?
Yeah, it was.
Well, mine was nine and I was on a cul-de-sac that wasn't even on Game Farm Road.
The only, and I understand, Councilmember Bruce, what you're saying, the difference between that and this is that Game Farm Road was a gravel road and it was converted to a bituminous road. And that's a big, that's a huge improvement. When you're going from a paved road, we'll call it a paved road still, to a new paved road, I don't think that the assess, that the value is quite as great as when you're going from a gravel to a bituminous.
No, I agree with that.
Okay.
I will add one thing about the comments about the road hasn't been touched in 40 years. I live on a road that hasn't been touched in 40 years either. And I've been in this city for 17 years and this is my second house. The first house I was on, that road just got redone two years ago now and that was assessed. So I understand what you're saying. And I've been on the council, this is my third year. And would I like to go back and have some council member discussions 10 years ago, 15 years ago? Absolutely. But with respect to everyone who was on the council at the time, I can't speak for them and they may have had valid reasons for what they did or didn't do. But I can't change that. What we can do now is rebuild the road and it's going to cost money. And keep in mind, even at 50 percent, everyone else, including everyone on this council, is paying another 50 percent. I wish I could make the cost smaller. I can't. We put it out for bid. We got the bids that we did. And this is, one of the things about local government is you can't pass it on like you can from the state to the local, from the federal down to the state. This is, we have to pay this if we want a road. Yeah, I wish, you know, we had state money. As was explained, there's only a couple of roads that we can use the state money for. That's a whole different discussion. Unfortunately, this isn't one of them and there's a lot of other streets. I think there was probably 10 of them that I saw in our work session that we actually can use them for. And about nine of those are gravel. So unfortunately, that's just not the case. So, you know, it's, I'm not gaining anything personally by doing this, just trying to do what's right for the city overall and replace some of our roads. So we're going to have to pay for it. And I think, you know, we put this 50 percent policy in place, it's actually before I came on board, but you know, if we don't do that, you might say, "Well, there's some cities that don't do that." Well, then you have a much higher overall tax base.
Correct.
But St. Paul had that same discussion a couple of years ago and their tax levy went up 25-plus percent. And so it hap, we can have a discussion all night long about what's fair and everyone has a different perspective of that, but the fact is, there's 444,000 that we're going to have to come up with from us.
To Dido Mike's comments, I do understand where you guys are coming from. And we are facing road and pavement management problems throughout, since I've been here. And we really have taken a real hard stance on trying to improve it. We sat here today in many other council meetings and work sessions to come up with a strategic plan so that going down the road, we won't have to face these kinds of, you know, assessment meetings. The 50/50 plan, 50 percent, you know, we as the rest of the community is still paying 50 percent of your roads. And these are roads that most people probably will never be on. I know they're public roads, but we won't be on them. I've lived here for 15 years and I've never been on your roads other than maybe to look at projects or whatever. So, but we are still paying 50 percent already. The bids came in higher, that's out of the control of the city, and we just had to pass them on to us already, the whole city at our portion of the 50 percent. And unfortunately, we have to pass that on to you as well with the assessment. I live on a gravel road and I do think if our road was ever made into a tar road, I would see great value in that. I would personally, because I live with the dust, I live with all of that. And that to me is a huge value to my home. And I, to spread that over 20 years, over, that's minimal payments added to increasing the home value, so.
This isn't gravel though?
I know, but I'm just saying, with my home, I would be assessed as well. And I would, you know, say that would be something I would consider as a value. So, and like their home, or their roads do need work desperately. And you all have commented on that. So that's where I stand.
I can't probably add any more wisdom than the rest of the council has. I've lived in Minutista for 33 years. Our road was blacktopped, had been blacktopped before we moved in. 33 years later, it's still the same road and I know what's facing I and my neighbors not too far down the line because currently our road is listed as to monitor, which means the next thing coming down the road will be reclamation. I think there's been a lot of effort prior to me, and those of you who don't know me, I was just elected this year. There's been a lot of input put into this assessment policy. It wasn't taken lightly. It's kind of a pay me now or pay me later. The city is still paying for 50 percent of, and I think the 50 percent assessment, sometimes it's negotiable, but then how do you draw the line, at least from my perspective, how do you draw the line? So this street, we agree on something else and the next street, we agree on something else, and then why have a policy? I'm a firm believer in having numbers, I'm an accountant background, so I, I live with numbers and I like numbers and I'm comfortable with numbers and I like policies and I like to enforce policies as long as they're reasonable. And an assessment policy, we just don't create it and then put it away and forget about it. It's something that is discussed every year as to needs to be tweaked or is there something new that can be added to it. But I still, I have to reside or I still have to come down on the side that I think an assessment is necessary because of the other places our tax dollars can be used and need to be used and that I would, I would accept the 50 percent and stay with the 50 percent.
The only, thank you, Mr. Trumpertland, but one of the things we do have to look at is the value added to the properties and the problem, the policy, as everybody stated, is just that. It's a policy. It's not, it's not mandated that we absolutely have to follow the policy, although I agree, I understand your rationale for following it, but you do also have to look at the dollar amount because if the dollar amount exceeds the value given to the properties, then we have to deviate from the 50 percent. And that's where I'm coming from. You, you're, when you're talking about a $13,000 assessment on a gravel road that's gravel going to bituminous, that's easy to sustain, that's easy to, to, to say you can see that value. But to go from a paved road to a new paved road, an $8,500 assessment is a little harder to prove. And that's where I'm coming, so you can state the, you can state the policy and you can say 50 percent is the policy, but on the other hand, you also have to look at the amount. And if the, and going forward, we're going to have to do that because some of these increases that have happened over the years are going to outpace the 50 percent policy. And we're going to be having, then if you stick solely to the policy, you're going to be assessing people, you know, $10,000 and $12,000 and we're going to get ourselves in a bind.
Okay, I would like to comment on that, if I may. First of all, prices go up. So to think that if you're going to get stuck with a dollar amount, you can't expect to pay 6,000 now if the price was 6,000 10 years ago. And second of all, the true cost of each property here is not 8,500, it's 17,000. So if what we're saying is we're going to cost $17,000 to do each one of these pieces of property and we can't prove a value of at least half that, then we shouldn't even do the project at all. Because I, why would you even do it then? So there's got to be enough, the 50 percent, regardless of the dollar amount, I still think is a very sustainable answer. The value, if your, if your mindset is that it only costs 10,000 per parcel to do it and that was set 10 years ago, then yeah, you're not going to see the value, but that's not reality. The bids have come in as what they are. And you can challenge that, but I think I'd be really hard to say it's going to cost 17,000, but the value is only, isn't 8,500. You're getting it for 50 percent off effectively on a pocket. So I just have a hard time buying that the value is not there. Because if it's, if the value's not there, then we might as well even do it.
Ms. Bruce?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor and Council. When, I live on Fielding Trail and Fielding Trail was a paved road that connected to Game Farm Road. And my, our assessment was $9,000 10 years ago. So I was on a paved road and I, we literally drive a few hundred yards on Game Farm Road to reach County Road 26. So if 10 years ago, $9,000 could be justified as an assessed value and provided that, that value to our property 10 years ago, I don't think we're going to have a problem with an 8,000, the $8,500 assessment to these properties here. Because I was living on a paved road then and the assessment was 9,000. So I don't, I don't buy that argument that it's, the properties aren't receiving the value because it was justified back in 2010 or 2011. And I don't see that it, prices have gone up since then. Property values have gone up since then. So I, I agree with Councilmember Molitor, I think we should leave it at the 85.
Okay. All right. Then another question I have for council is the interest rate. Again, it's set at 5 percent based on the fact that if, if, if the council were to bond for this, we would probably see a 3 percent bond rate. And so therefore, 2 percent above that is 5. However, we're not bonding for this, so my question is, why not 2 percent? Since we're not bonding, we have no cost for bonding, we have no interest rate for bonding. Then in my opinion, according to our policy, it should be a 2 percent interest rate.
And I would have a question for Mr. Grimm. Is part of the reason for having it be 2 percent above what we're paying is because sometimes people don't pay their assessments and that money has to.
Correct, yes, to guard against delinquencies. You're exactly right.
It's to take care of delinquencies.
Yeah, and some administrative costs too and stuff, you know, but it's, yeah, the majority is probably to guard against payments not coming in as timely pay financing.
So 2 percent, yeah. So that's the 2 percent.
Over what?
Over what we usually would, yeah, make our principal interest payments with, you're correct.
Right, so how many, what percentage of properties don't pay their assessments? Do we have an idea?
Very few.
I mean, I think we have a pretty decent collection rate here as far as people paying their property taxes, which in turn means they're usually paying their, you know, they're not pulling that out usually. So, yeah, I would say our collection rate is, is pretty decent in the city of Minutista.
So is the delinquency rate less than 1 percent, 5 percent, 10 percent?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, it's.
I gave you three numbers.
Yeah, yeah. It's between, probably between 1 and 5 percent, I'd say. I'd say it's a 95, you know, to 98 percent collection rate, you know, it's usually in that area, correct, yeah.
So could we save 4 percent?
What I'm getting at is we have no interest, we have no interest, we have, and so normally we do 2 percent in order to cover those costs. So I'm saying, why not 2 percent then? That's what we normally would do. So why just arbitrarily take 4 percent or 5 percent? I don't get that. So that's what I'm saying is, why not 2 percent? That should cover our costs because that's what it's been in the past.
Well, there's something called an opportunity cost, meaning you would normally take that money and invest it in an investment rate at about 3 percent, and we're not doing that. Now, you can make the argument that you don't want to do that, that's fine, but that's really the logic. It's really the opportunity cost that you're missing out here. Now, you know, I find it kind of ironic because we normally don't like to do projects without bonding, so here we are doing a project without bonding and now all of a sudden you don't want to charge the interest, but.
I didn't say no interest, I said the standard 2 percent above what we pay.
You said no interest on the bond, so. So I think, you know, but that's, I think that's the logic, is it's a missed opportunity cost. I'm, you know, I could, I could be, you know, you're pointing about 4 percent, I would be fine with that.
I guess the question comes in Hollister and Chan to the people there, basically pay, are paying 5 percent on their assessment because we had to bond.
We had the bond.
Should this be differently because we didn't, for them, the next project, we might have to bond.
That goes to my point, is that if I were a resident of Hollister right now and I would, or Tuxedo or any other project that we bonded on, I'd be in here saying, "Well, how come I have to pay 5 percent because the city financed that one, but the city didn't finance this one, so they get a break?" That wasn't my choice as a resident. And so why are they getting kind of deals?
But that's, okay, hold on, hold on. But again, what we're saying, what I'm saying is, you all cited the policy and you all want to stick with the policy. The policy says 2 percent above the city's costs. Our costs are zero.
No, they're not.
Well, they are in essence, we're, it says 2 percent above the percentage that we're paying for the bond. And we don't, we're not bonding in this project. So I'm just saying, follow the policy.
I'm saying you don't understand economics. There is an opportunity cost. And the opportunity cost is you're not investing the money.
All right, well, we can.
Okay, now, like I said, I'm willing to talk about that, but we can't ignore basically not the economics here.
I'm not ignoring the opportunity cost, that's the 2 percent.
I agree with Councilmember Molitor. There are opportunity costs to the money, you could be investing it, and I think.
money. You could be investing it. And I think, I agree that those residents on, on Hollister that are paying 5% are going to come back and say, well, why, it, it shouldn't, the residents shouldn't have to care whether we bond or not. That's our business. We, we, we run the, the city and we, we handle the money. Whether we bond for this or not isn't a residence concern. We need a policy that should be fair and equitable across all the properties and, and all the residents that, that face assessments. And we, I think it's difficult to justify deviating from the policy just because-
We're not.
-of the way that we're financing the project.
Okay. All right. So we don't need to debate this or argue about it. You have your opinions and I have mine. So what does the council want to do? Stick with the 5%, go to the 2%, go to the 4%?
I would stay with the 5%.
Okay.
I just want to add one more thing. The city is paying 50% of, you know, of the whole project. Many residents, I would guess the majority of them are probably going to be taking the opportunity to fund this for 20 years. Right? Probably.
Yeah.
So in a way, isn't that kind of like taking a loan from the city? Because we have to pay for this when the job is done. We have to pay for everything that was done. So regardless, we don't, the city doesn't get 20 years to pay it off. So we are going to pay for the whole job and 50% of it, most of them are going to have 20 years to pay it off, paying the city back as a loan. That's kind of how I'm viewing it.
That's, that's-
I agree. I think that's a good point.
Okay. So it sounds like you want to stick with the 5%.
Yes.
All right. So with that then, we need a motion relating to the special assessments, Mr. Attorney.
We need to close the public hearing.
Do we close the public hearing prior to taking the vote?
Yes.
If this is a public hearing, you can speak.
Um, I'll give you a real-
Can we all speak?
Well, I'll tell you what. We'll give five more minutes. So you haven't spoken. If you'd like to say something, please try and be brief.
Name's Curtis Johnson, 6925 DeShane Lane. So what I'm hearing from you guys, very conflicting. One person says we need to follow the policy. Other person wants to be reasonable. Other person says the policy says this. You say, well, we don't need to follow the policy. We're going to make our own policy. Guys need to be consistent. 25% is okay for you, Shannon, but it's not okay for us. You don't know financial situations. You don't know anything about property values. What is the property value on the people on, uh, Game Farm Road versus our, our roads? What's that percentage? You're not taking everything holistically. I just, it's, it's kind of comical.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Quickly.
Yes, Brian Andy, it's 440 DeShane Circle. Again, I, I guess Pam or Shannon, I live off of Dirt Road as well. I have to travel down North Branch Road to Dirt Road. First of all, I want to make that clear to you. Second of all, is I don't know how this council proves to us the $8,500 value increase to our house. I don't know how you do that, Michael. And Pam, for you, that's called opportunity cost. It's called profit. And the last thing I would like to say is, is when you talk about the city's paying the other 50%, do I not participate in that other 50%? You act this evening here like, I don't. I do. We all do.
Okay.
So I like to make that clarification. It's frustrating to hear that from the council.
Sure. All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Locke, quickly.
Dave Locke, 685 DeShane Lane. I've been an accountant for 50 years and I've used opportunity cost over and over. It's squat. It doesn't mean a thing. I can use opportunity cost of 20%. It's an old accounting trick and it doesn't work. So I just have to say that.
All right. All right. Thank you and thank you for all your comments. With that, I'm going to have to close the public hearing. If anybody wishes to present a, a letter to the city regarding opposition or appealing the, um, appealing the assessment, you need to do that tonight.
No.
So I'm, is there anybody that would like to?
No.
I'm sorry. That's, I know. I'm getting at that. Anybody, anybody that wishes to appeal the, um, the assessment needs to provide our attorney with a single, a simple letter stating that you appeal or that you-
It's got to go to the presiding officer.
Okay. It has to come to me. Okay. It has to come to me.
Bring him on up.
Um, your name and address needs to be stated and you need to sign it. Uh, this will be, as Mr. Beatty pointed out, the first step or keeps the door open for you. You can then just have 30 days to decide what you, what you want to do, basically. So if you'd like to do that, I'll give you, is there anybody that would like to present? Okay.
Is anybody or just one?
No, no. Everybody, every property, every property owner has to.
Each household.
Each, yeah. Each household. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So you say you just have to write something down on a piece of paper?
Yep. It can, it can look as simple as this.
I'm just going to use this letter I got from mail.
Okay. Okay.
Use your pen.
So is that everybody?
No, we have one more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Want to make sure we've covered everything? Okay. Now who do I give these to?
Well, you, you can keep them until, uh, the conclusion and then you give them to state.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to council. If you are interested in doing the special assessment, I need a, um, a motion to help me out here, Mr. Beatty.
Madam Mayor, Council, uh, what you're considering now is the adoption of the assessment. So someone needs to make a motion that specu, that specifies principal amount of the assessment, the term, which I haven't heard debated tonight, uh, but is stated in the resolution and the interest rate.
In the, I'm sorry, in the resolution, I believe it was a 20-year term?
Yes.
And it's been decided 5%? And do you want the assessment on a per parcel basis or do you want the total 200 and some odd?
Well, don't we have it in the resolution on here?
Madam Mayor, what, what I would suggest is if the resolution as drafted in the packet is acceptable, I mean, somebody can simply make a motion to adopt that resolution.
And that would be, yeah.
If any changes, then you would deviate.
Okay. A resolution number 6419.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 6419.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those, any further discussion? I'm going to be opposing it. I will be voting no. Um, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion passes four to one. Wayland dissenting. So that concludes our, that concludes our public hearing and special assessment for DeShane Lane and Oxyoke. So we'll move on to business items. Uh, I'm going to take about a five-minute break so that I'm sure you folks would like to leave. So we'll take about a five-minute break and then come back to our business items. We are all back here now and we can now resume our meeting. So with that, we'll move on to our business items. So the first business item, we're going to be talking about the water tower location and property. First, I'm going to start out with David. I'm going to ask David if you could maybe update us on kind of where we've been and also on some current events. Recently, we've met with the Turks and spoke with them and we said we'd relay their concerns and their, their objections to the council. And so with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So as, as the council will call, they'll probably the last item we talked about with you was authorizing the work for the soil testing and then having survey work done on the site. And so that, that work has happened. And because of that activity, that sparked our city administrator, Mike Barone, to send both property owners on each side of the 2.3 acres that we're looking to buy, updating them on what activities actually going on, what they're seeing that's occurring out there, and also letting them know what the intentions of the city was to, to use for the site in, in the future, what it could become. Um, so that letter was sent on May 10th. Um, a follow-up to that, the surveyor was out on the site, uh, conducting the survey and indicated to the city that there was a temporary electrical fence that was encroaching on the east side of the property line. So that led for staff to call that property owner, which, which were the, were the Turks and have a discussion about, about the fence, which then led to an actual meeting with the Turks and some family members here last Wednesday here at City Hall. We had a couple engineers from SEH that were present at that meeting. Certainly don't want to put words in your, in their mouths. They're, they're right here with us this evening. But I, just as summary, um, they, they weren't pleased with the location of, of the site. Um, they mentioned a couple other sites that they, they thought might be better suited for us, uh, this type of use. Um, another thing that was brought up was stormwater runoff was one, one of their big concerns. That's why we had the engineers from SEH there to, to listen to that and, and take a look at that. As you know, we're not into the design phase yet, but certainly something that we would make the engineers aware of as they proceed with this project. Um, but without having all of the stormwater calks and runoff in that detail yet, um, some ideas were thrown out, but it just, again, it was an area of concern that was brought up. Um, a lot of the water, all of the water from this site would eventually have to run over their property to the east at some point. And so again, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to follow stormwater rules just like anyone else when it comes to developing a, a site. But again, that was just something that, um, was brought up. And again, I don't want to speak on, on your behalf, but that, I guess a summary of what, what I took out of the meeting. So that's, that's what, what has happened since. Again, we did send a, a letter to the property owner on the other side and have not heard anything from, from that property owner to, to date. So.
So I was in the meeting as well and I think the Turks would like, wanted us to present to the council, um, a request not to put the water tower in this location to look at other properties. I did tell them I think that was highly unlikely. Um, I said, I don't think that their council will want to change their mind at this point. However, I said I definitely would, um, give you that option or tell you what their feelings are, what they're, um, what they were thinking. Uh, they felt that there were some other sites in the vicinity, not too far away, that, um, could be considered. One of the sites that they, um, mentioned was the one site that we had considered. That was in Carver County. And many months ago, maybe even a year ago, we decided that wasn't appropriate. And so that's off the table. They mentioned a couple other sites and we, we, I also explained to them that we were looking for a willing seller, which this property owner is. And so is there any, um, desire to change the location or to look for a different site?
I think we've looked at, at least in my tenure here, we've looked at a lot of sites and this was, is the best fit from my perspective. Um, like we said, the Carver County one came up a year ago probably, or even probably prior to that.
A long time ago, yeah.
I've been here a year. So, um, I think this is, is a good site and I said a willing seller and no other issues with being in another county. Don't have a homeowners association here. Don't have a park issue here. Um, I think this is the best thing that we've got quite right now.
Okay. Okay.
And I, I agree with Councilmember Shemberlin. I, it's never easy to put up a water tower. Nobody, nobody wants a water tower next to them. And it's, it's one of those decisions that the council has to decide what's best for the city. And I think we've looked at a number of locations and, and excluded all of them for one reason or another. This, this is the best site and we've spent countless hours evaluating sites. Um, so I, I agree. I think this is where we have to keep it.
Yeah. One of the issues, I'm sorry, but one of the criteria that we were looking for too, we were hoping to find a site without any structures on it because that can be also very costly to have to remove structures. So that was the other consideration. And this is Bearland. Ms. Mortensen?
Um, to me, we have looked at many properties, many meetings. Um, it's kind of, to me, late in the game to be bringing this up. Was there, it is common practice that we let residents know in advance and, uh, that something like this could be evolving. Was there some communication, um, prior to just recently, um, that this was?
Well, I, I had, you know, as, as the council's brought up, we've talked about many different sites and made, made inquiries all over. Years ago, I did send an email to, to the Turks asking if they were willing to, because as you recall, they're, one of their, their site was one of those in our bubble, if you will. There's, from an engineering standpoint, we, we went through that, it's got to fit in this bubble in order to work from an engineering standpoint. So we, we just, you know, started contacting, looking at elevation. So I had sent an email out, got the email off of the St. Bonnie Chamber of Commerce, uh, that comes out and sent and asked if they were willing. And I'd, I'd heard nothing back. Um, but other than that, I mean, we've, we've had public meetings. It's been in the newspaper.
You know, newsletter.
You know, we, the direct contact, the only direct contact that was made via letter would have been the letter that Mr. Barone sent on May 10th.
Okay.
I don't know if we have any public meetings.
Hold on. Mr. Turk and, and Mr. and Ms. Turk, you can come to the podium here and state your name and address for the record. And we'll give you a few minutes to say a few-
My name is Don Turk. It's 9300 Highway 7. Um, you said a couple of things that I should, think you people should hear though. You said you never heard back from the property owner, which is west of this property, which is high land, is high ground. It doesn't, doesn't require a, a ton of fill like this two acres does. And, uh, it doesn't have a bunch of the other problems. And I, you haven't looked at that. You haven't talked to her because I talked to her today, the owner of it. And she is willing to sell it. She has now talked to a, uh, realtor of buyer that would buy her property or whatever at a cheap price. And, and I just talked to her today and she said this.
Well, Mr.-
So I mean, that's, I don't, I don't know why we're spending tons and tons of mon, our tax dollar here, uh, to fill a hole and, and, you know, re, you know, very wet. Yes, I know where the, they drilled for, where, up on the hill there for, or I mean, that back toward, uh, the other, the other property. But the other property, the elevation is a lot higher. And it, I don't know the, the elevations, but, uh-
I think the property that you're referring to is the property that-
It belongs to Michelle Furman.
Right. And Mr. Abel, um, sent her an email as well.
No, she got the same letter that Mr. Turk did.
Yeah. But in, wasn't, didn't she get an email?
She never received it either. I just talked to her today and she said she never received it either.
Okay.
A letter. She got the same letter that you got.
Or now.
Yeah.
The other day, this week.
Still haven't heard from her.
Yeah. So the other thing that we were looking for is vacant land because the cost to remove buildings.
The cost of filling is, is just as great as the cost of removing.
And we're going to be hearing from an engineer.
She, she said herself, it's a tear down house and a tear down barn.
Right. Yeah.
But we got to pay for the tear down.
Yeah. So, but-
But it's all also built on clay and it's, it's high.
Mm-hmm.
Much higher than, I mean, I don't know.
Right.
So I mean, those costs also come into play when you're building a water tower.
Sure. Yep. Yep.
I just, I just think you were very remiss in more.
In looking at that. Sure. Okay. Well-
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Thank you.
Mr. Yeah. Right.
Yeah. I never received an email.
Okay. Mr. Beatty?
Madam Mayor, Council, let me just point out something. We have a binding purchase agreement.
Right.
I mean, what we're talking about tonight is in my opinion, not reconsidering the purchase of this property. What we're considering is taking care of, clicking off some of the contingencies moving towards that.
Right. That, you're correct. And, and I did explain that to the Turks in our meeting. Said that the chances were very unlikely. We already had quite a few tax, not tax dollars, We already had quite a few tax, not tax dollars, but water dollars invested in this. But I said, "We would bring your request to the council for consideration," and so that's what David and I are doing here this evening. And so I think you've heard from the council that we're going to move forward with this, with this property. Having said that, I think David said it very well, we will work very diligently with you and our engineers to make sure that we can work on that water runoff issue. And also, having said that, if this was a private home that was being built here, they wouldn't even have to consider stormwater. But because it's us and because we're doing something different, it's going to have a smaller footprint and pervious surface than a larger home, these homes today have, and they wouldn't even have to do a stormwater runoff issue. So we will work with you on that, and we will see what we can do to help you on that issue. So with that, we are going to move on to the contingencies. Mr. Beatty, I think you had some.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, what you've got is a staff report that I drafted in an attempt to, as I mentioned a minute ago, to talk about a number of the contingencies that were in the purchase agreement. Again, you authorized a purchase agreement about two months ago, which has been signed by the property owner, so it is a binding agreement. There are contingencies in there dealing with title work, which we've investigated, dealing with soils, conditions, and so forth, and so tonight's actions are designed to satisfy some of those contingencies. And I'm going to add one other item when I get through. You'll see there are a number of things dealt with in the report, and there are four specific items that the report asks you to do, deal with. The first and probably the largest one is the soils report that SEH prepared. A copy of that is in your packet, as well as the Braun Intertek report that was associated with that. Basically, what, and Miles Jensen is here to present that report and answer any questions, but the request is going to be that the council accept that report indicating that you find this property suitable, from an engineering standpoint, for the construction of a water tower, which satisfies one of the contingencies. One of the other items, again, attached as an exhibit in your report, has to do with a simple subdivision. As you know, what we're buying, well, originally it was two acres, we've actually increased it slightly to 2.3 acres for no increase in cost. That property needs to be subdivided from the larger parcel, and so that's a simple subdivision, which comes directly to the council, and so there's a resolution to deal with that. About 30-some years ago, as part of another subdivision from that property, the city required that the property owner impose an open space and ag preservation easement on the property, which limits what can be done on the property. Part of this deal is that the city will release that easement from the property, and so that's another item that is included in your packet. And finally, there's a resolution, there's a reimbursement resolution in the packet for your consideration. Those are necessary, or those are convenient. If this, if you ultimately choose to finance the project through bonds, there are these early costs that are incurred, and this is a method to be able to reimburse yourself through the bond sale, which would occur sometime in the future. Federal tax law requires that if you want to reimburse yourselves for those costs, that you adopt a resolution. It does not commit the city to any particular form of financing, including bonds, but if that's ultimately how you pay for the project, having a reimbursement resolution upfront will allow you to recapture up to the $125,000 amount in the resolution. The fifth item, which is not in the report, because it only came up today, has to do with a brief continuation of the, or extension of the closing date. The purchase agreement called for a closing of on June 14th, which would be a week from Friday, and we've been diligently working towards satisfying these contingencies. The property owner today indicated that they would like to have a brief extension to June 19th, so that would be the Wednesday of the following week, which I'm perfectly okay with. In fact, that gives us a little bit more time to satisfy the contingencies. So if the council is okay with that, then the fifth item that I would ask is that you authorize me to draft a very, and authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute a very short extension, which merely closes or extends the closing date. I simply didn't have a time, a chance today to prepare such a document, but that's all it would do.
Okay, well, let's start with the, hopefully, quick and easy one, and that's moving the closing date. So currently, it's scheduled for June 15th. If you're all in favor of moving it to June 19th, which I don't see a problem with, would be a week later, and then you'd authorize the mayor and clerk to execute or to extend the closing date to June 19th. Is that agreeable? Okay?
Yes.
Need to make a motion?
Yep.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, and second to authorize the mayor and clerk to extend the closing date to June 19th. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So now we'll move on to more complicated things. So we need to accept the SEH report attached as Exhibit A. We don't have to approve it, we just need to accept it. Mr. Jensen, I believe you're here because of that? Maybe you could just give us some background and some information.
So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and staff, last time, I think we chatted on this, or at least that I was here, it was April 15th, and that's when we, I was directed to move ahead with an exploratory geotechnical study to determine if this site was suitable for construction of an elevated water tank. And so we did that, the work was done on April 26th and April 29th. I think they had a rig breakdown or something like that. The upshot of it is, is that the site is suitable, the upper 18 feet of the soil in the area of the water tank is a little bit softer than would be ideal, but below that is fine. The normal spread foundation for this thing is about 10 feet deep anyways, so there's a couple of options. One is to dig out the additional eight feet and put in engineered fill, compacted fill, or the other one is to ram aggregate piles into the ground, essentially to, you know, form, you know, mini piers, if you would. And either case, there, it's about the same price, $40,000 to $50,000 or whatever Luke wrote in here, I think it was something close to that.
Forty to 45, I think he said.
Forty to 45,000. And so looking at, you know, our preliminary estimates that we've had, that little table and all that stuff, that still keeps this site and the elevated tank the lowest cost option, so.
Is this pretty standard soils and corrections?
Yeah, I mean, you run into stuff every once in a while. I should say, probably, you know, half the time we do, so it's not, it's not unusual by any means. That's why we have our Geotecs work on it right away. Anyway, so the proposed site, 1B, if you recall, just from a preliminary piece there, the expected water tower height was indicated at 156 feet, and I think now it's, it's looking like it might be a little bit shorter, 151, 152 feet. So we'll save a little bit of money there, but, you know, have to add a little bit in for the soil correction. So if you look at that number there, 2.46, add 40,000 to it, we're at 2.5 million, so we're still, you know, it's still the least cost option. It's a nice site, it's located close to the main, water main, which is huge, so. Any other, any questions for me?
Any questions? Are you going to have to do additional borings or testing?
Yeah, so this was just a preliminary to, you know, figure out, is it a suitable site? But we've already have a contract with you.
Right.
For the formal soil boring effort, where they'll plunk down a bunch of borings just to make sure that we, they can account for differential settlements.
Okay, all right.
If you want to touch on the, if there's not any questions about that, maybe touch base on the site plan quickly, just to, again, this is conceptual.
Sure, sure.
But point of this is just to prove that future needs could be accommodated on the site, if you want to touch on that, Miles at all.
Yeah, so, so this is, like David said, this is just an example, but we're moving the water tower to the, to the northeast, or northwest, I'm sorry, to get it to the higher ground, so we have a shorter shaft, and then we're also showing spatially how a well and 500 gallon per minute water treatment plant could fit, so.
And that's in the future?
Correct.
I mean, we don't know if that's five years or 10 years, or, but sometime in the future.
Yeah, and that's always been kind of the plan, moving along, ever since we came along, so, you know, we're just following along with that same thought pattern.
Right.
And that treatment plant there, for what it's worth, is essentially the one that's at on game farm road, so.
And then, when you do the stormwater pond, would you do it, would you size it for the treatment plant as well, so that we don't have to redo it?
We can, we may not want to, because there's a chance that it'll get dug up anyways.
Oh, okay.
So I would leave that up to my stormwater people.
Yeah, okay.
They're smarter on that than I.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay. And then, again, just kind of for reference, a well is planned, is that immediate or is that future?
Future.
Okay, so we don't need it immediately?
Future, right.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to accept the Geotech report from SEH?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So a motion has been made to accept the geotechnical report from SEH by Mr. Chamberlain, and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And so next is approve the simple subdivision, I believe that's David.
Madam Mayor and Council, I guess just briefly, as Ron described in his opening statements there, in order to go ahead and go through with the closing and the transaction, we do need to break off the 2.3 acres of land off the larger parcel. That can be done, we're not creating a new buildable lot, so it does meet the criteria for our simple subdivision requirements. The property will eventually become public, semi-public, in zoning nature, because that's what we do with all of our public facilities. We can't go through that motion right now, as you all know, we're in the process of getting our comp plan, our 2040 comp plan, updated with the Metropolitan Council. They're actually going through the approval process right now, it's going through their various committees. But so probably sometime within the next year, once that plan's been approved, we can go ahead and rezone this property, this 2.3 acres to public, semi-public. But the action tonight with the resolution is to approve that 2.3 acre split off of the larger parcel.
Okay. Sounds, this went to the planning commission and?
It did not, Madam Mayor, because it's, simple subdivisions go straight to City Council.
Oh, that's right, okay, thank you for reminding me. All right, all right.
Motion to approve the subdivision, simple subdivision as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve the simple subdivision of property located at 9400 Trunk Highway 7 for an SNRB Investments LP. That's currently the owner, so any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. And then approve the release of an agricultural easement. Mr. Beatty?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, again, that was a 1986 easement having to do with the ag preservation of the property. The owners have asked that that be removed, we've talked about that earlier, and the council was agreeable to that. The quid pro quo, from the city's standpoint, is that they remove the solar easement and lease that's on that property. And so what I would, which I have not received back, I had anticipated that we would have it by now, I've been in, David's talked to their staff people, I've talked to their attorney, they're agreeable, they just have, haven't processed it yet.
With the solar people?
Yes, with the solar people. So the only thing I would suggest is that if the council is agreeable to number three, that you make authorization, that your motion include that the mayor and clerk are authorized to execute this release only upon receipt of the release from US Solar of their lease.
Yep, okay. It shouldn't be a problem, it just seems like it's a timing issue, yeah.
They're just, it's just one of the many details.
Yeah.
Dealing with this.
All right, any other questions?
So is this release of this easement is, that was, that whole 40 acres was covered by this?
70 acres.
It's 70 acres, right.
Yes, thank you.
So we're releasing it on the entire, not just our?
Yes.
Okay.
The easement was over the entire property, so, and so we're releasing the easement over the entire property?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, okay, any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to release the open space and agricultural preservation easement over this property with the understanding that we would execute it at the time of receiving this release from the solar company?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Chamberlain made the motion, and Ms. Bruce seconded, all those, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So then, last, I believe, but not least, is the resolution to, for the reimbursement resolution for the land, and actually, it should be for land and engineering and any other costs.
Yeah, those initial costs.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's included in that 125,000, that's why we, the amount's not just the flat 100,000 or?
Yeah, in the staff report, I mentioned that.
Okay.
The original, Madam Mayor, the original draft of the resolution was 100,000, because that is the price of the property, but you're right, there, we have, the city has agreed to assume all the closing costs. SEH has costs involved, that we talked about this, the survey to do the simple subdivision, there are legal costs involved, and so it was specifically increased to 125 to be able to capture all of those costs.
And are we good with that amount?
I think so. If we need more, we'll come back for more.
Okay.
Well, the larger potential reimbursement resolution, we, once we get around, actually, doing the project, and that's where we can decide, you know, ultimately we'll decide how much we want to bond to, once we get to that point, et cetera, but this just preserves the right to get reimbursed for these costs.
Plus, we do have some money set aside in cash, too, for the project, so we could, that could be used as well, I mean, or.
Yeah, and I think generally, soft costs are in addition to this, so I think that's a good number.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, then, do I have a motion to Resolution Number 6619, reimbursement resolution for, for land and associated costs?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any further questions?
I will state that, as I've mentioned many times, the water fund is equipped to handle this, and I understand that this resolution just preserves the right to be able to bond for this, but I just don't see that as being necessary, so I will be opposing.
Right, and like I said, this resolution doesn't say we won't use those funds.
I get it.
It just says we could.
I think in principle, though, I want to state that I am opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, then, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes for one, with Malater dissenting. So next, so that concludes our water tower issues, so now we move on to HR. Right?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
6B.
6B.
Professional services agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay, sorry. Yes, all right. So next, we have approve our professional service agreement, professional services for construction observation for the 2019 street projects. Miss, Mr. Gadbois? I know, I'm getting it down.
Said a couple hundred times, she'll make.
Another couple hundred times, she'll make it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Come back one more time, talk about the 2019 project, and then we can start working on construction, hopefully, get the streets built and improved. So what you have in front of you is a staff report discussing the professional services proposal, there's a letter proposal included in the packet, for construction engineering services associated with the project. And basically, what that is, is the construction staff and all of the construction management associated with the project, so, we'll have observer on site, which is standard practice to make sure they're monitoring the progress and making sure the construction is to the plans and specifications. We have the survey involved with that, the materials testing to test that the, the tuminus and the concrete and the aggregate, everything that's going in on the project meets specifications, so we can work towards the, the design life of the, of the road. Along with that is the contract administration, so we'll work with the contractor to produce pay vouchers for their work, track their quantities, and make sure that they're getting paid for what they've actually put in the ground and installed, and keeping an eye on the, the construction throughout the process, and then the closeout of the construction as well. So, W S P has provided the letter proposal that details the scope of services and the estimated fees, there's two spreadsheets attached, one would be for the observation and the surveying, and then the second one would be for the geotech and the testing of the materials, and so those are detailed with the hourly rates and the, the estimated time for that work, and it's a not-to-exceed amount, and it's a cost basis, so, if it were to exceed that, it wouldn't, wouldn't be able to exceed that without council authorization, and it is an estimate of the time spent, if construction goes quicker, then less time would be spent, that sort of thing, and it, because of the nature of the work, it won't involve full-time inspection, so we have observation staff that are handling multiple projects throughout the city, around the developments, and some of the other projects, and so they won't be on-site full-time, but they'll be going when it's necessary and when contractor needs something tested or observed prior to backfilling and that sort of thing, so, won't be a full-time inspection position. And if I didn't mention this, the indirect costs, and with this proposal is, does fall within the indirect costs in the resolution on May 6th that declared the costs of the project, which, that assumed a 20% indirect, and so this does fall within that indirect cost. I'll stand for any questions on the, the staff report.
Okay. Questions? I believe the maximum amount would be 59119, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then it would have to come back to council if it exceeds that? Okay?
That is correct.
All right? All right. So is there a motion to approve professional service agreement for the professional services for construction observation for the 2019 street projects, C P O 1-19?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now, we're moving on to H R. So, building inspector or building official?
Correct, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so as noted, there are two things before, you approve probationary to full-time permanent, excuse me, building inspector for Robert Goodman, and approve promotion of building inspector to building officials, we'll have two different resolutions, but I would like to talk about them as one entity first. So, Robert joined us as our building inspector on June 5th of 2018, so he'll have his one year anniversary on June 5th of 2019. Requirements to move from probationary to full-time is to have a satisfactory review from your supervisor, and a recommendation for staff, for staff member to stay on, so, David is Robert's supervisor, gave him a satisfactory, if not glowing, review, we get fantastic feedback from the field, with the people, residents and the builders that he's working for, and staff internally find him suitable to work with. So, with that being said, we would recommend that he be moved from probationary to full-time status. In his original agreement, when he came on board, the personnel committee and the council approved for him to have a 2% increase when he hit that one-year mark, that is not included in this resolution because of the second part. So, I'll move on to the second piece, and then I can stand for questions. So the personnel committee met on May 29th to discuss the fact that we were looking to hire a building official, we interviewed building official candidates, if you recall, we're on our second, we completed two full rounds, during that second round is when Robert expressed interest to be an internal candidate for the position, and we accepted that interest on his part. He's done an excellent job, as I mentioned, over the years, and compared to the other candidates that we had apply for the position, he had equal, if not greater, experience, and experience administered as well, to be the lead candidate for the position. So, with that being said, I listed in the item before the council, the pay grades, just to articulate, so our building inspector is what Robert is currently, that's a grade level 10, and the range for our building inspector is 2704 to 3516 currently. Building official is a grade level 13, and that pay grade range is 3350 to 4187. So, Robert's pay is currently at grade for the building inspector position in our pay grading system, and would need to be adjusted to the entry point of the building official pay grade, so that would take him from 2723, which is what he's currently being paid, to 3350 an hour. As we continue with the process for hiring our inspector, which would backfill then Robert, and we are currently interviewing for, we have two other interviews coming up this week, then that person would come in typically at the 2704, assuming that they're coming in at that first level, if we have someone apply who is a good candidate, who is experienced, may see a slight differential in there, just like we would for anybody else who's coming in. So, on the second page of that, I took a look at mapping out our building inspector and building official pay plan, so, as you know, these positions have been very difficult to fill, the market is difficult, we had 11 other positions that were currently being advertised for inspector, and there were four other building officials being advertised currently while we're working through this process. So, the first line shows you that currently our inspector would be a moot point if you were to promote Robert, so we would hire that person in roughly 2704. Last year, we did, the council approved a cost of living adjustment, a COLA, at 2.75, so I put that in as an assumption, and then a 3% market adjustment, which would put it at 28.59, and then at one year, as I mentioned, we typically move people up 2%, again, trying to stay within the market of what's happening with these two positions, and that puts us at 2916. So Robert then would come in on that next line in his promotion, currently 2723, promoted to 3350, again, with the assumption of a COLA and a 3% market adjustment, we'd be looking at 3542, and at one year, a 2% increase, again, trying to keep them within their range in the market, would be 3612 an hour. So below that, you can see as well, that I listed out from 2016 to current state, what we have paid in the past. So, when Jesse and Chad, two prior people, first came on board with us in 2016, we were paying 1363, they went through their growth potential throughout the city, we ended with 1425 for that pair, then Chad, as you remember, left for another city and for higher pay, so we brought Robert in, so Jesse and Robert together, we're making 1379. Jesse left for a promotional opportunity as well, with another city and higher pay, and so we are looking for approval to promote Robert to building official, he does meet all the criteria for him to be declared the building official currently, through the state of Minnesota, and then bring in a new hire, if the new hire is brought in, again, at roughly 2704, we're looking at 1357, so we would still be about $1,000 under what we were paying in 2016. A lot of numbers, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions?
One question, I think you mentioned that last year, we had approved for Robert, at that point, the 2% increase, which would be effective now if he were not?
If he were not, correct.
Being considered here. Was that, but within your line here, you've got that 2%, you've got the COLA of 275, and then a 3% market adjustment? I believe we only would have, we only initially approved the 2%, is that correct?
Correct, so if he were to stay in his current role, he'd go from 2723 an hour with a 2% increase as of June 5th.
Okay. So, the reason why I ask that is, if, if we go through this promotion, we are, are we just approving the promotion and the pay to 3350, or are we also approving, again, this time, the 2%?
That's a very good clarification, so, which is why I tried to do this as one big picture, if the promotion were to be approved, that initial 2% increase that was in the building inspector position would stay with the building inspector, would not go forward with him, we would just go to the very bottom of the building official line, which is the 3350.
So there's no expectation next year set?
Yeah, then there would be another adjustment next year.
So the COLA plus 2.75 and 3% market adjustment is, is January 1?
January of 2020, I apologize, I missed your statement.
So, so the current 2723 goes to 3350 with a promotion, that's June of 2019, and on January 1 of 2020, he would get the COLA of 2.75 and a 3% market adjustment, that brings him to 3542, and then a year from his hire as the official, he gets a 2%. So he's kind of delaying the 2% increase that he was going to get as an inspector, and we're just moving that as his one-year anniversary, end of probation, 2% increase.
One of the things we looked at is, we said, well, what are building officials, and there's a big difference between official and, what are building officials getting paid in other communities, and even these numbers are, are somewhat low, and so we thought, you know, we've had such a hard time trying to find qualified individuals, that we said we, we need to at least do this much, most of them are earning in the $40 range.
Well, we had an advertisement that was on the league from the city of Golden Valley for the inspector, that started at $40 an hour. Robert lives in St. Louis Park, I don't want him to go to Golden Valley for 40 bucks, I want to keep him here for 35, thinking this is a great place to work, he's got other growth opportunities here that he may not get at, at Golden Valley. But we think that he's willing to work with us, as we are to work with him, to make sure that, we try to keep him competitive, we may not hit exactly what he wants, but, as you can see by the chart that Cassandra put together, Jesse and Chad are no longer here, and they ran out the door for higher pay, so we're trying to avoid that. So these market adjustments are, I don't know, somewhat new for us, but we, we've tried to do them when appropriate, but even with the ones you see, that, you know, we're still not near the, the midpoint, I would say. So we're going to keep tabs on this, and these could change, but we want to keep these people, Robert's an excellent employee, he's, he's got a great temperament, and as Cassandra mentioned, he does great in the field, we get feedback from him, like we didn't get previously, and so, I think they're worth investing in. That's the hardest part these days, is finding people.
And I think, too, to speak to council member Maliter's point, one of the things that was mentioned when we did our H R presentation, about two years ago now? Was the fact that these big market adjustments and these big jumps that are needing to happen within people's current positions, to try to re-put them back in the market, one of the things that we committed to, as a request to the council, was to try to do these incremental pieces, and try to be a little bit more predictive of what will need to happen, so that we're not doing these large increases.
So this is a large increase, but this is a promotion versus just giving somebody a giant bonus?
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I ask that is, you know, obviously, he's going to be receiving a, a big jump for his promotion, understood that, I'm just a little bit concerned with putting 3% on top of what is already being promoted, within a span of less than six months, and then 2% after that, plus the 2.75, that's a lot of upward movement, really quick, I, I'm totally okay with the promotions, it's a different job, it's, that's a different scenario than when we talked about this?
Right.
A year or two ago, that's different, I'm fine with that, I'm just a little bit concerned, I, I get what you're saying about the market adjustment, I'm just, I'm asking questions about that.
Yeah.
No, those are good questions.
I think those are great questions, and as we mentioned earlier as well, with the 15 postings that were out the same period that we're doing this, our building inspector fell in the bottom 25th percentile of the range, and then we were the very bottom for building official, including our neighbor Victoria, so, yes, I, I agree with you, it's taking a look at this from a market level, and then just making sure that we're paying attention to what's happening to, in the surrounding areas, with those we're competing for employees for, as Mayor Wayman mentioned.
Yeah, I, we just didn't want to go out and have to pay 40 or 42 dollars, I think we'd probably be in that range for a building official, if we had to go out and advertise for it, well, we didn't, yeah, we didn't get any qualified.
Others with more experience than Robert.
Right.
Generally been our philosophy here, not to lead the pack in pay, pay rate, but to be competitive, I feel like we're still being competitive, Robert's a pretty good, pretty honest guy, if he feels like he can find something else better, he may come and tell us before he actually takes the jump, so, you know, it's kind of leverages in the employees more than the employers these days, but, again, there's data to back it up, so.
So, first, we have a resolution to approve the probationary to full-time permanent building inspector for Robert Goodman?
Correct, and, and to one other clarification, I apologize, with the probationary period for Robert, it is in performance only, so if we have an internal candidate who gets promoted to another position, they do have, sort of, another probationary period, but it's performance only, so, typically, in that first probation, they earn and accrue sick and vacation leave, but they can't use it until six months for sick, and then one year for vacation, so he would still be able to use his time that he's accrued, as he normally has, he waited a year to use the vacation, so he'll be taking one very shortly, actually, but this would be performance only, so just for clarification.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to approve the probationary to full-time permanent building inspector for Robert Goodman?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And next, approve the promotion of building inspector to building official for Robert Goodman?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, thank you very much, and congratulate Mr. Goodman. So next, administrative items, we'll move on to staff reports, Mr. Barone?
I just have a couple of items. One, I just want to remind the council about our upcoming two meetings, we have another council meeting in June, the second meeting in June, on Monday, June 17th, and then we have a four-week break before we meet again, which will be July 15th, so, just wanted to give you that reminder. As the mayor mentioned, we met last week with M C S about the interceptor project, and why it was taking so long, but also the public safety concerns, so I have the folks from, from M C S presented us with a packet that day, I thought I, I didn't, I forgot to put it in the info packet, so I'll give each one of you folks a packet, so you can see what we talked about, and what was discussed, and then, as also mentioned a little bit earlier, about the head nods we got from the neighbors over near County Road 44, about the fire truck being parked on the opposite side of the fence for public safety, or the bridge, for public safety purposes, so, that is in place, and I got an email from Eric Overston, the city manager in Malm last week, saying it's, it's there, it's able to meet the medical responses and all the other things that, across the Priest Bay Channel, and if something changes, they'll change, so, but they, they're all on board with being able to, to relocate that if, if they, if they need to, so.
Hey Mike, the information you just handed out, there has been interest on updates at the W C C meetings, is this something that I can give to them as well, or is this just?
I don't see why not, because it's going to have the general information there about what the issues have been.
what the issues have been. A little bit on the project itself, but there's some stuff in there that's also related to the moving of the, or the vehicles on the other side. This is the ultimate solution to the public safety stuff. So, you know, they could be interested in all of it. That's fine, yeah.
Okay. And the schedule is tentative, but this, they think that they can adhere to this.
They're going to finish this, plug in these.
They, yeah, they hope to have the bridge open the middle of June, is what they're hoping, which will make it a lot easier. So right now, what the plan is, is when a call comes in, if it were for fire medical, they would take a truck, I mean, a.
Yeah, from the station.
From the station.
Go to the bridge, walk the bridge.
Walk across the bridge and hop on the vehicle. I mean, that's, that's saving, that's saving them a whole bunch of time versus a 10-mile detour, so.
Driving around, it's going to be longer.
So, but yeah, and I think there's a plan in here, the construction, not, yeah, they're, they're just saying what the, yeah, I'm sure you can share this and.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Our engineer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have a subcontractor for Tuxedo and Enchanted has indicated that they will be out on, starting on Wednesday, to clean up that project site. So we anticipate seeing some activity out there. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate and we won't get any more rain so they can get going. And then with regards to the Halsted Farm Hill project, staff has been discussing with the legal department as far as what our next steps will be.
Any projections on once they get started on Wednesday, the completion?
Excellent question. I would guess within a week.
A week.
I mean, they have some cleanup to do. If they have a good crew out there and can get some hands on it, we should be able to get it out there pretty quickly.
The sooner the better for everybody.
Well, there is a bit of an issue in that I think the road is still flooded. If I'm, I haven't been out there. I know last week there was some water over the road. So there's certain parts that they might not be able to get to, but.
Okay. And Director of Administration, Ms. Cassandra Taber?
So I wanted to provide an update and look for a consensus on a date. So if you recall, at the strategic planning meeting you approved staff to go forward with scheduling through LMCIT, the league training on working collaboratively and good governance, that's with Pam Whitmore. So if you recall, there was a pre-workshop meeting that she wanted to have with council members and the director staff. And so she gave two options for that. Monday, June 24, between 10:30 and 4:30 she'd be available, or Tuesday, July 2, between 10:30 and 4:30. And this is leading up to the July 15 work session that Ms. Barone just mentioned. And a reminder that that work session, because the training takes a little bit of time, would start at 4:00 PM.
And so you said that, so can we, we just tell you which day we're available?
Yeah, we just need a consensus. And she said ideally, she'd like to meet in person. She's aware that there may be work schedules that require that meeting to be a phone call, but she'll come out and meet with whomever she can in person, just because it's usually a nicer conversation.
We could work around council schedule, staff. We can try to feed ourselves in between. So we'd like to have her here one of those two days.
Yep. So Monday, June 24, or Tuesday, July 2.
And what was the time?
10:30 to 4:30.
I'm not available the 2nd.
I think, what are they, half-hour windows?
Yeah. She said about 30 minutes.
I'm available on the 24th.
I'm available the 24th.
I can do the 24th.
Sounds like the 24th.
I can do the 24th by phone.
Okay.
I'll have to see. I'll have to make the 24th work.
Okay. And if you know in advance you need a phone call, I can pre-let her know that as well. But she said that wouldn't be an issue. I, like I said, I let her know we had some work schedules that may need to be jumped on, so.
Will there be any preparation for that meeting, or is it just come as we are?
Yep.
So when she says 4:30, she wants me done by 4:30?
Yeah. That's my understanding. But if we need to work out something specific, I can help communicate and make sure that everybody's needs are met.
Do we have a planning meeting that night?
Yes, and I will be there.
Okay. I will let her know the 24th, and that Ms. Bruce needs a phone call. And then, Mike, you can just let me know if there's a need. Okay, thank you.
All right. So now we'll move on to council reports. So, let's see. Yeah, basically, all the meetings so far have been mentioned. The personnel, I met with Personnel Committee meeting, had a meeting with the Turks and staff, and also the Met Council meeting. There were about 12 of us there. So it included Met Council, Mound staff, City, Minutrista staff, County was there. So there, there were a lot of people there, and we had a very good meeting, and really appreciated their efforts and quick response as well. So also, this is kind of referring back to what Ms. Bruce was saying earlier in the meeting. We did receive several emails this week from residents, one regarding the water issue there on, or the Met Council project, and then also one on regarding Game Farm Road. What I would generally, when we get emails from residents, if it's something that we, I can respond to, I respond to. If it's something that I need to connect staff with, in the case of the Met Council issue, I, you know, don't know all of the issues. So then I have them research it and have them reply. The Game Farm Road issue, I haven't yet. I thought maybe we could talk about that. Maybe, we didn't have time at the work session, but we could certainly bring that up at a work session. And I don't know all of the answers to the questions at the resident. It was Cindy Notch, and I know that they've had concerns regarding our engineering firm before. And I'm, you know, I guess there's always cost versus benefit that you have to look at. But we can discuss that maybe at our next work session as well.
I'm not sure it requires a work session meeting to discuss it. More than just addressing that specific email, I was just wanting to have a place on our agenda where there are people that are intimidated by coming to city council meetings and speaking at the persons-to-be-heard sessions. And they prefer to communicate by email to council members. And I, I think if we had a place on our agenda where we just kept track of those, it's not very often. We don't get emails to all council members very often. But when we do, it's usually an issue that is important, at least to the resident. And we've also had a number of times when we've had issues come before us, where we didn't know how many times somebody had brought this issue up before. You know, like too many cars parked in somebody's driveway. But it could be a place on our agenda that we could just go to look at historically, how many people have had issues with this topic. Because when you have people coming to persons-to-be-heard, or you address it at staff reports, there's not one place to go to see where these issues, that people feel important enough to write a letter to all the council members, to go have historical data. So that was my suggestion. So it wasn't just specifically to address Mrs. Notch's questions about Game Farm Road. I'm not sure there's much we can do about Game Farm Road. I think it's, that we have a lot of water this year. So it wasn't specifically about that email. It was more just a place where we can go on our agenda to discuss items like this. And like the County Road 44 project, and the Met Council, and the chemicals, and things like that. It's a place to go back and see that.
Okay. I'd like to finish my report. So if I could, please. So the only other thing I wanted to mention is we have our city bus tour coming up next week. I know there's been quite a few reservations. If you haven't made your reservation, please do so, so that we can get an accurate count. So it's next Tuesday evening. We will be meeting here 5:30, departing promptly at 6. We have a really fun, fun tour planned this year, some new things on the tour that we haven't done in the past. So if you haven't been able to make it, please join us. So with that, I'll pass it on to Ms. Martinson.
I attended the planning commission meeting on May 28. We discussed the proposed land purchased by Three Rivers District 4 to be compliant with the comp plan. It did pass 5-0. There wasn't a lot of discussion. They all felt very comfortable that this fit nicely within the comp plan. And so they liked seeing the conservation of our rural area. They thought this was the perfect spot to do that. WCC meeting is on 6/13 at Surfside Depot. I was not able to attend the personnel meeting last week. However, I got the notes from Cassandra. I reviewed them that evening, and we had a phone conversation and followed up, and I weighed in on my opinion. And I am attending the bus tour next week.
I have a question about the planning commission meeting. Did the, did the topic of how much property taxes were being paid on that property come up at the meeting? And how much?
Yes, it did come up. Steve Livermore asked what, you know, in comparison to the last time this came up. And the local tax base on it is 600, $769.37.
Not, not just the local, but the whole thing comes off?
They had a packet with all the tax information in it, yes. So, and they all felt comfortable with pursuing the proposal.
Madam Mayor and Council, if I may, that's, that's not their business. You know, they were reviewing it for the comp plan. So I guess just, just for clarification, that's you as a council's decision from a policy standpoint.
But it was brought up. Steve Livermore did bring it up. And, yeah, so there was very little discussion about it.
Because that's not their purview.
Right. But he did ask the question, so we did address it. Okay.
Couple of things. Start with the LMCD. There's a public hearing that was started, but it's going to be continued in the next meeting, next week, a document. Also, preliminary budget was approved, and you saw that in the informational packet. Pretty modest increase. I think it's 2.4%. Outside of that, a couple of things I did want to talk about. We've talked a couple of times now, the work session, and then previously, about our pavement specs going forward. We currently have three and a half inches. I'd like to be able to at least move forward with getting that upgraded standard to four and a half inches into our standard specifications as soon as possible, realizing it won't impact this year's work construction. But I'm concerned about, as new developments come down the pike, that they are held to the standard. So I would like some movement on that at some point here relatively soon. And I don't know where the rest of the council is on that issue, but I want to make sure that we're.
Should we bring that back? Can we bring that back at the next council meeting? If we're going to make, because it would make, it would require a change to our, our city standards.
Right.
And I don't know how, how in-depth that would be, or complicated it would be. I wouldn't think so, but.
I'll let the engineer tell us.
Madam Mayor, we could certainly look at making an amendment to our city specifications to require the four and a half inches of bituminous. And we can take a look at, you know, just a revised detail plate in the city spec book.
Okay. So would, could you bring that back next council meeting?
I don't anticipate that that would be an issue. I think that would be.
Okay. All right. If, is the council in agreement with that? I think we, we heard very positives about that at our work session, so that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Did you guys want clarification?
Great place to start.
Existing developments?
Well, I guess, to make sure, we heard you correctly. You said it wouldn't affect this year's street projects, but it would affect what? Just anything that comes, that's new.
Future.
You know, like the, as an example, if there's a parcel land that some developer comes in and says, okay, I want to develop this parcel. And they start going on the path of, you know, they need to put in a new street, that they would now be held to that new standard. Okay. So a new development.
Application.
Application.
See, because it wouldn't even affect Woodland Cove, because they've already been approved for their whole development, you know, yeah. He's already gone through preliminary and everything, so it would be hard to change at this point.
So that's what we're asking.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah, we want to make sure.
I think it's too late as well.
Right. Now.
That's, that was my understanding. Perhaps you didn't, the intent is that it's not been, I'm not trying to pull the rug out for anyone here.
Right.
But I am trying to set the new rug down for everyone to come in and say, no, I get it, you know, for everyone else. It's, I don't, that's not the intent.
What we could do, and this would be, rather than doing the seal coat, then the city could pay the difference, and, and they could put the four and a half inch down. That might be a discussion item, because it wouldn't cost the developer anymore. It's just the city would maybe end up saving more in the long run.
Right.
So we can talk about that, but.
Yeah, it might, it might be such that we take, take out the requirement of the escrow for the seal coat and substitute it with the thicker.
Thicker, right.
Somewhat neutral.
Okay. Okay, good.
Other question I had, well, we, I think the last time, Cassandra, you mentioned seasonal hiring. We had one, and it's my understanding we're down to, or we had two down to one, potentially.
Correct. We do currently now have one seasonal. We are reposting. And I know that you and Mike spoke earlier today, and Gary and I had a conversation as well. So we're reposting for that position. The range for that position right now, we are paying our returning seasonals, 13 an hour. Our hiring rate was $12 an hour. But we discussed posting at 15 to be more competitive. We are getting zero responses to our seasonal posting. With that being said, from city to city, and it does not seem to matter how large some of these cities are, it ranges anywhere from 10 to like $21 an hour. So 15 puts us in that middle mark. And hopefully, we'll bring Gary in some additional help. And so that was the intent.
If we hire someone new at 15, but we have people on for a year, 13.
We would make adjustment to the one person who's on with us, yes.
Would he, would he or she be then 16, or?
No, just moving to 15.
Just move, because that is a, they came in at 13, and it was agreeable to that. We'd just take them up to the new.
Call it a raise.
Okay.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're, because we've talked about this before.
Yep.
You know, I think we want to make sure Gary has some help. And I think budget impact seasonal is pretty minimal.
Minus, minus.
Right.
Kind of along the same lines. We just had a building inspector discussion, so.
Yep, absolutely. So that'll get reposted tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Don't leave anything.
Okay.
And I'll be attending the Parks Commission tomorrow night. That's all I have.
And then, can you bring back at the work session, maybe we can have a brief discussion on what Ms. Bruce was talking about?
Sure.
See if we want to add something. All right.
Oh, man, I'm sorry. It's the 11. Not tomorrow night, it's the 11.
Correct. I was just looking at my calendar. Sure, yeah.
You might be here by yourself.
In the, in the dark.
They don't want to leave.
In the dark. All right. So that concludes our business items and everything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0.